L W V trained moderator with the L W V Minnesota. And I'm having the pleasure of moderating for tonight's forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, we want to thank you all here for coming to the forum. And we want to thank all of the candidates for your participation in community and for being here tonight and participating in our event. At this point, I would like to ask everyone to shut off their cell phones. Maybe I'll do the same, just make sure we have no interruptions. Okay. I'd like to state that tonight's forum is a civic certified event. We'd like to thank the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation for their information and for their guidance. And here to tell us more about it is Kathryn Lentz from the Civility Project.
Thank you. This evening, you received some materials from Speaker Pete's The Civility Project. One is this green colored card that lists the nine tenants of civility. On the white sheet, which is the other piece of paper you received, a listing of expectations of you as audience members as this forum proceeds. Speaker Pete, The Civility Project is an initiative of the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation and the League of Women Voters in Duluth. Foundation and League of Women Voters would like to thank in advance the candidates and you as audience members for your cooperation.
Thank you Kathryn. Okay. As a little bit of an introduction, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that works on local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in our government. While we as a league do do some studies and take stances on some issues, we do not, as an organization, endorse or support political parties or candidates. The candidates... The views that are expressed at tonight's forum are those of the participating candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters. L W V sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any of the particular candidates that are participating. L W V has had a presence in Duluth for over 90 years. The league's mission is to promote citizen involvement in government and increase public understanding in major political policy issues. We believe that informed citizenry is the foundation of an effective democracy. League membership is open to all, so if anyone is interested in nonpartisan civic participation, we'd like to encourage you to join. If you'd like more information, you can pick up an information folder over here at the table or check out our website at www.lwvduluth.org. That's all one word, L W V Duluth dot O R G. For tonight's forum, our forum will begin with candidates giving a two-minute opening statement. This will be followed by the questioning round, during which the candidates will be given one and a half minutes on which to provide a response. After that, we will follow the questioning round with each candidate again having a two-minute closing statement to conclude the forum. Candidates will be asked the questions in a rotating order. The order of responses was determined at random, just as candidates arrived. None of our candidates were provided the questions in advance. Candidates, we will have time keepers here to help you. They are sitting up here in the front row. They will be holding up placards to indicate the time remaining. The placards will be held up at 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and stop. If we get to stop, we'd ask you to just finish your statement and move on from there. We will start tonight's questions with those that were solicited and vetted by our organizing committee. They will be followed by questions that are submitted by the audience or have been submitted online at our L W V website, as time allows. We encourage audience members to submit questions in writing on the index cards that are either provided in the back of the room. If you need index cards during the forum, you can raise your hands and we will have volunteers come and deliver them to you. Please write your questions on the cards and then hold them up again and the volunteers can come pick them up. Please note that all submitted questions will be addressed for... will be assessed, I apologize, for clarity and bias. If you do not hear your specific question, note that these which fall in a similar category will be consolidated, allowing us to cover as many topics as possible in the time allotted. Questions that are deemed unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature would not be used and all questions become a property of the League of Women Voters. So, at this time, I would like to introduce in alphabetical order the Duluth City Councilor-at-Large candidates for office. First, on the far end to my right is Eric Forsman. Next to him is Noah Hobbs, Mr. Mike Mayeux, Derek Medved...
Medved.
There we go.
There we go.
And Matthew William Stewart. So, I will now begin with the opening comments. As was stated, we did do a drawing of random numbers, and so we will be starting with the opening remarks by Mr. Stewart.
Hello. Hello. Hi, I'm Matthew. I'm Stewart, and I decided to run for city council, city at large. I've lived in the city for a cumulative of 35 years. I looked around my city and I saw some things that were great about it. I've been around the world and I've been around the country. And I see that we can make some really good, decent changes to actually offer opportunities that come into our community. We have some of the best trails. We have the biggest lake that I don't think we're actually taking advantage of as much as we should to bring people in. We have great opportunities for everybody to actually come to our city and actually love it. I do see some things or some changes that actually could be made in a really great way to actually improve everything around our city. It's going to take all of us, is what I feel. I look around and just on the drive here, I see many vacant lots that actually is costing Duluth money where it could actually be generating money for the city of Duluth. So, I was looking forward to this, and this is my first opportunity, and I decided to take it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Forsman. Sorry, we only have one microphone.
We'll get in the rhythm here. We'll get in the rhythm here as we go. First of all, I want to say thank you to the league for hosting this forum and thank you all for coming tonight. This is democracy in action, so I appreciate you all taking an interest. I'm a beautiful Duluthite. My name is Eric Forsman. I've been proud and privileged to serve you as a Duluth City Councilor-at-Large for the past 12 months. I was appointed in July from a field of 20 applicants. And tonight, I'm excited to share what I've been up to for the last year with issues like childcare, affordable housing, public safety, economic development, as well as our streets. In addition to serving you as an at-large councillor, I also serve our community. I work full-time in economic development, where I work to bring business to town, attract new investment to our community and our region, with the ultimate goal, in my opinion, of trying to grow more family sustaining jobs in our region. Backing up, 10 years ago, I graduated from the University of Minnesota Duluth, the L W Pitt School of Business and Economics with high honors. And since then, I've worked in the private sector with Minnesota Power. I've worked in the public sector with St. Louis County, served on numerous nonprofit boards such as Community Action Duluth, business groups like the Greater Downtown Council, the St. Louis Civil Service Commission, as well as the Duluth Earn Sick and Save Time Cast Force and the Duluth Public Utilities Commission. What that gives me is not only what I think is still youthful, energy that I bring to the city council role, but also a well-rounded experience. And when issues are brought forward to the city council, we really do have to think from multiple perspectives to figure out what is best for our community and to work with everybody in the community to make those decisions. And I feel that I am equipped and have shown that I'm equipped to make those decisions effectively. And so tonight, I'm looking forward to a great discussion and learning from the other candidates. We have a lot of youth up here, which is great to see, young people interested in politics. And so I'm sure we'll get some ideas from all of you that we can build in our community. And then at home, I'm also a dad, and it's my favorite job. I have two little kids who will hopefully still be awake by the time we get home tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Next is Mr. Medved.
Hi, everybody. I'm Derek Medved. One, thank you to the league and thank you to everybody for showing up tonight. You know, I was born and raised out in the western part of town, Gary New Duluth, by a single mother who raised my sister and I. And she taught us a lot about things in life. One, she taught me how to work really hard. You know what else started years ago when I was 15, almost 16? And she said, you know, "If you want a car for your 16th birthday, you gotta work really, really, really hard for it." And boy, did I not realize how, you know, what I was in for. So, you know, I went out and I worked. I started working at Super One, you know, other odd jobs. And I really realized my passion was working in customer service with peoples, people in the community. And I worked with, you know, the Melcos, Jim Shelton and Gary. And I'd learned, you know, that customer service was my passion. He taught me a lot about things in the gas station industry. From there, I left and went on, turned around and bought the gas station when I graduated high school at Denfeld High School, and continued to grow from there. From three to 40 employees, you know, from one to four stores, balancing a $16 million budget a year, we've grown in leaps and bounds, and I'm very excited. But the one thing that I've learned through the whole adventure is that teamwork is what it takes, working together is what gets the job done. So alone, I don't stand a chance, but together, we can make anything possible. So, that's my message tonight and through the whole campaign, is that, you know, no matter what challenges we face, you know, together as a community, we can make anything possible. We just gotta work together and make it happen. So, I can't wait to share my insights and ideas with you all, and I can't wait to hear the questions you have tonight. Thanks, guys.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Medved. Now, Mr. Mayeux.
Hey, everyone. My name is Mike Mayeux, and I'm running for one of the at-large seats here on Duluth City Council. Really excited to see everyone here tonight. And I wanted to introduce myself. I'm a lifelong Duluthian, a community organizer. And I first got involved and started getting involved in our community through my dad's union. First with the postal workers, then with the letter carriers. We fought to save six-day delivery here in our town and across the nation, and to keep our local post offices open. That was when I was younger, and I really learned the power of organizing and what we can do together as a community when we come together and fight for what we believe in. So, I've seen that happen so much, and I want to see that continue happening. I'm an organizer. I'm not going to stop organizing. I'm going to continue organizing. And I've seen the power that we can really have when we all come together and encourage others to vote. So that's why I'm so excited to see a full room here tonight, because when we all vote and participate in democracy, we make our democracy stronger. So, I'm running on three main issues, which I'm sure we'll delve into more later tonight, but they're based around accessibility, sustainability, and empowerment. And really, continuing to move Duluth forward, we've been really great places so far, and we're making great progress, but there's still more progress to make in the future. There are communities that have been left out of the process in the past, and I think it's time that we include those communities in the conversation and continue to move forward together.
All right. Thank you. And lastly is Mr. Hobbs.
Thank you. I'm Noah Hobbs. I'm currently the Duluth City Council President, and I've served in that role the past year. It's been an honor to serve as an at-large as city councillor for the last three years and a couple of months. I appreciate League of Women Voters putting this on. I was telling everyone at the door, this is one of the best events that we have during campaign season. It informs the public. It's great that it's right here in my neighborhood. My wife and I bought our house out here in West Duluth in 2012. And during the day, I work at One Roof Community Housing as the lending director and understand the difficulty in financing both affordable housing and then market rate housing and private housing and all of the layering of funding that has to go with that. My wife and I today would have a difficult time purchasing that house that we bought in 2012, just through appreciation. It's nearly doubled in a very modest home out here in Denfeld. And some of the work that I've done on the city council, we brought Uber and Lyft here to the city without having an unfair competitive advantage to our local cab industry. Shared the red tape reduction task force, we brought that forward, so we've made a more intuitive regulatory environment for first-time entrepreneurs and those looking to change locations to here in Duluth. We've also worked in investing over $1 million into streets and our infrastructure, and then additionally with the sales tax, which I was supportive of. We'll have 25 million, we'll have $7 million a year for the next 25 years dedicated to repair our streets, which I'm sure everyone drives on the worst road in Duluth, because I actually donate, street just got written down, so it's all right. But everyone else drives on the worst streets in Duluth. We also worked on fixing our water lines and having a sustainable 100-year replacement plan for that. I've worked on creating, preserving, and enhancing the Lake Superior Zoo and working to make sure those projects are rolling in the St. Louis River Corridor, get across the finish line. So we've invested $50 million from 19th Avenue West all the way to Fond du Lac, Gary. And I would certainly appreciate to continue that role. I think we have a lot to still do, and I look forward to having more conversations.
All right. Thank you so much. Now we will move on to the question portion of our forum. Again, these are one and a half minute answers, and our time card holders will help you keep on track with what's going on. As noted, these are random generated, so we begin this question with our last candidate, who was Mr. Hobbs. He will begin and answer the first question here. Duluth City Harbor and the St. Louis River Corridor are areas unique to our city and prioritized in our vision Duluth. Can you describe a favorite development, restoration, or remediation project in one of these areas?
Yeah, it's certainly hard to pick one. There's been so many great ones, and we'll come to the end of that $50 million investment.
I apologize. Let me say it much louder. I apologize. The Duluth Harbor and the St. Louis River Corridor are unique to our city and prioritized in our vision Duluth. We're asking the candidate to describe a favorite development, restoration, or remediation project from this area.
All right.
Sorry. Your time will start over.
Yeah, so there's lots to pick from. I think Chambers Grove is incredible. It's one of the hidden jewels, I think, of Duluth Park System. That's been restored and has a natural habitat now for sturgeon, and they're now naturally reproducing in the St. Louis River, which is fantastic. We've made investments in our zoo, and we'll be breaking on Bear Country, and that's great. We're extending the Western Waterfront Trail, and it's graded that to the ADA compliance so that everyone can use it, and creating more access to the river through our kayak bay, which is now, we've passed, and will be a housing development along there with that. The folks with varying levels of abilities can now access our river and paddle. Prior to that, they'd have to build the two harbors to access the water if they have any varying levels of movability across the spectrum. And so those are some of the projects that we have, and I think we have a great opportunity to add housing out here. And then also, we have the Atlas Cement Site, so we have some economic development that is unrealized at this point, but we're still working to bring that land back. So those are some of the projects that I've been proud to support and will continue to advocate for.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hobbs. Next on the list is Mr. Medved.
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely think that Chambers Grove, as Hobbs said, is a very important, you know, very awesome part of our city. You know, I'm really proud to be out in that part of town. You know, grew up up there and seeing the changes that happened. Very beautiful. Also, I think that the Radio Tower Bay that many maybe not know about was dredged out in the western part of town, and that was cleaned up. And so I think that, you know, moving forward, there's a lot of cleanups that are taking place. And, you know, those are two of the top ones that I think are very paramount to cleaning up the river and getting things addressed. The, you know, a lot of great organizations throughout the city, you know, work very hard, you know, to create, you know, kayaking and canoeing areas, you know, for paddlers in the city, the trails and everything, you know, so on and so forth. So, I think, you know, heading in the right direction, so.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. Stewart.
Yes, Duluth City Harbor and Chambers Grove, there's been a lot of work on that, but not too much where I think that, what is it, right down the street here, I think it's called Swoopy Hollow, or not Swoopy Hollow, it's that... It's right on the edge. It's a nice bird reserve right here, next to the old New Page Plant. And it's actually been torn apart, and I'd actually like to see that brought back and upkept. It was a big jewel of the west Duluth, Chambers Grove area and the harbor. It's actually been torn down for the last three years. And if you go back 20 years, I've been walking that path, and I was really disappointed it was taken out. So I'd really like to... We do a lot of good things, but I'd like to see these things actually work out, or we can actually look around and actually help.
Thank you. Mr. Forsman?
Yeah, great question. In addition to all the projects that were mentioned, one of the projects that excites me the most for our future, but is also probably going to be the slowest moving of the all my aspect, is the cleanup of the U.S. Steel Site. The steel plant in Morgan Park is the reason we thought we were going to be larger than Chicago. And obviously, that used to be the economic heartbeat of our city. When we look at land use planning, we don't have that many opportunities throughout the city of Duluth to bring a large-scale economic development project to town. And as somebody who grew up in a company town that looks pretty similar to Morgan Park, I have a lot of affinity for trying to bring jobs back out west. And I think with the Port Authority working to purchase some of that land and to put it back into reuse, we have ample opportunity to do some traction with either a manufacturing-related business or potentially renewable energy, something port-related. Industrial jobs produce $61,000 for median income on average, and they typically help take a bachelor's degree. And it's very important, as we look at our city across all of our districts, we talk to a lot about some of the projects that are really about livable communities that are important out west, but I believe that we really need to focus on some general creation out western side of towns.
All right. And Mr. Mayeux?
So I just want to pay you back and say, for me, I really thought of the St. Louis River and the Estuary Cleanup as well. I think it's really important that we secure that funding and that we're able to clean that area up. And it's going to be really a community conversation about how do we work with the railroad, obviously, to clean that area up as well. And so I'm really excited about that, keeping our lakes, waters, and streams clean and free of potential contaminants and really restoring the area so that everyone can use it once again. And then in addition, the Western Waterfront Trail, expanding that. I'm a huge user of our trails, and I really appreciate being able to bike and hike and walk on our, all of our trails that we have here throughout the city. And that's one of the greatest things we have in Duluth, is our access to trails and outdoor recreational space. So, I'm really excited about those projects and would be excited to work on those on city council as well.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. And we will start with Mr. Mayeux. Homelessness is a concern for many of... I'm sorry. Homelessness is a concern for many of our citizens of Duluth. There are many organizations that are working on this issue with several kinds of ideas. Do you have any specific ideas on how to address this concern, this issue?
Yeah, so throughout my work, I actually was a part of the Homeless Persons Bill of Rights Coalition. We did a lot of work looking at the affordable housing needs of our community and what we could do to potentially work with other community organizations to see where there are potential development opportunities. With affordable housing and with homelessness, there are, you know, a lot of people that think they might have the one idea that's going to solve everything. But the true answer is no one really has one idea that's going to be the end-all solution to everything. So we need to work with our community partners that are already working on this issue. We have the Affordable Housing Coalition, which is doing great work. One of the best ideas they have to help really get people into homes and work on affordable housing in our city is the creation of an Affordable Housing Trust Fund for our city, which would have funds available to put towards projects and then further attract state money and federal money to use on those projects. I also think it's really important that we continue with homelessness specifically in our city, to invest in our warming facilities across the city. We had one last year that was a coordination between the county and the city, and that was a great project that we really worked on together and both put funds towards, and also hygiene facilities for everyone, so that everyone has an opportunity to use a shower or a restroom regardless of your living situation. It's really a human right, and I really am really excited to work on this issue on council.
Okay. Thank you so much. Yes, Mr. Hobbs is next. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so I think to talk about the warming center, I worked with County Commissioner Patrick Boyle to get that open here in West Duluth, and there was a lot of work in working with various partners to, A, answer questions, what did it look like, how did it operate, and then how to find a more appropriate facility in the long term. So it was a pilot project that we were able to get off the ground in 45 days, which is almost unheard of in government, specifically because we worked with the county, the local government, and then also CHUM, which I'm also on the Board of Directors and have been for the past five, five years. So that's one thing that we did in CHUM is actually changed our operations as an organization in allowing folks into the center, into the shelter at night, to be more welcoming, so that folks that are out about experiencing homelessness aren't unsheltered, they're more comfortable coming into the CHUM shelter. So I have some experience in that and actually leading the charge on that. I think it certainly comes down to, you're only homeless if you don't have a home. So we had homeless, we had housing units for those that are experiencing homelessness, and not only just add housing units, but partner with the county to make sure that they are receiving the services that they need, whether it's addiction treatment, whether it's employment services, maybe it's connections to get back into education to further their employability, and also child services. So there's a lot to do it, and so it's not going to be just the city that does it, it'll be the city and the county. And it would certainly be great if the federal government would step up to the plate on C D B G and E S G grants, which they have left most municipalities across the country holding their bags since 1984.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Forsman.
Yeah, this is an important issue, and I think the last two gentlemen touched on it pretty nicely. I was at the last Affordable Housing Coalition meeting where they gave up the stat for how many households we have that are homeless right now, and it's 967 in the city of Duluth, which is significant. And if you do the math on that, we could do about 15, 50 unit buildings and build them overnight, and we would probably be out of our capacity, but that is going to take a lot of time and effort. Obviously, the city of Duluth alone does not have the resources to build out projects like that. So it is slow, which is frustrating. As councillor Hobbs mentioned, C D B G money comes from the federal government, so the city of Duluth will give it to the state in hopes that it will come back, and there's some really good reasons why we do that. But unfortunately, we're not always in control of whether that happens. And so last year, we didn't get any projects that were funded through that program that we were able to start building. Now this year, I think we voted on five so far this year, and if we are awarded those projects from the state, then we will fill the gap and we'll see construction happen. And something Mr. Mayeux mentioned earlier with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is definitely a good idea. The city of Redding has done that, and I think that we could learn some lessons from it. There are also other funding sources that we could look at for how to start out with financing more of our own projects. But at the end of the day, this is just about people, and it's about recognizing that there are folks in our community who are struggling, and it is an issue that we need to continue working with our nonprofit partners, as well as many others in the community to make progress on.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stewart, you're next.
Yes, homelessness has always been a priority of mine. Speaking from experience myself, I've lived in Seattle, I've actually lived in a tense city. So when you make it a priority, it actually changes the wording of it. It's not a problem, it's a priority for me. We need to work better as a community. Like I said in my first statement, we have a lot of vacant lots going throughout Duluth, and that's lost income for the city of Duluth. We need to basically invest into our credit unions, and those credit unions can actually give out loans to buy houses, and those will free up apartments for our cities, so we can actually put our homelessness into those apartments. And then on top of that, we can actually work with some of the other programs to fulfill education, which would be long-sustaining housing. I've actually worked with H R A, and they actually have a great program for students, for anybody that is homeless. It takes three to two months just to get into public housing, and over two years to get onto Section 8 housing. And this would be a priority of mine, to get people off the streets and into rentals and from rentals, getting them into homeownership. Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, and last is Mr. Medved.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely. I think that the homelessness concern is a very great issue, and I think that the city has, you know, done a very fair job on, you know, creating warming shelters, as Hobbs had mentioned, for, you know, the homeless. But I think, you know, and like Forsman had mentioned, it's about the people, and we got to remember it's about the people, and each individual person, family, has their own issues. And so we got to really realize that one solution does not fit everybody. And so directing the attention back to the individual themselves, understanding what their issues may be, whether it may be a mental health issue, a family issue, drug issue, addiction issue, every issue is focusing on the person themselves. So, one solution is not going to fix it all, and we just got to understand that, you know, we're going to provide every opportunity we can to help them get out of that, you know, place they're in, to bring them back to a better time for them, and create, hopefully, housing that we can provide them. But the warming shelter is definitely paramount to getting them out of that solution or issue they're in. So, you know, the city can definitely step up, but the federal, county can play their part too. So partnering with them and growing from there is important. So I think the city has done a very fair job.
Okay. Mr. Medved, we will start now with you. Question number three. Question number three. Is Duluth repairing enough roads to keep ahead of next winter's damage? And do you believe that the repairs are being allocated amongst Duluth neighborhoods fairly or equally? And can you speak louder?
I can. Did everybody hear that question appropriately?
Should I read it again?
Do you want to drop the mic?
Sure. Okay, is Duluth repairing enough roads to keep ahead of next winter's damage? And do you believe that the repairs are being allocated equally amongst Duluth neighborhoods?
Well, I've said this, you know, time and time again, that I believe previous administrations have kicked the can down the road for many, many years. The issue is not being addressed. But I think that, you know, in the past recent weeks, with the passing of that sales tax, we're on our way to a better time, and we're going to start projects, you know, over the next couple of years to address all of the city issues, the roadways within our city. So I think it's a very exciting time for the city of Duluth, and I think the city council and everybody has played their role. But can we do more? You know, how quickly can we get these projects done? How quickly can we address, you know, a street in your neighborhood? So I think previous, no. I don't think that that issue has been addressed. But I think we're on our way to a better time to, you know, take care of those issues.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Stewart.
Thank you. Yes, the roads have always been one of the key topics for Duluth. We do have some very terrible roads all across Duluth. But let's face the facts. We got to keep the roads and people moving. Duluth's income is tourism and college and a lot of other things. And we got to keep those roads clear so those businesses keep in contact. I know that Decker Road, Minnesota Avenue, that Decker Road goes up to the mall there, Minnesota Avenue goes down to Park Point. These are two terrible roads that I know just firsthand from driving on a weekly basis. Is it fulfilling going all the way around Duluth? It just has to go in a certain direction. And the last administration and the current administration actually did an excellent job with passing the taxes so we can actually start working on this issue. And I totally stand behind that.
Okay, next is Mr. Mayhew.
So I am really excited about the passage of the sales tax. That's going to help out a lot with our road repairs around here. And that money will be available starting in 2020, and then we'll be able to dig into that pot of money and actually start using it to repair our roads and our infrastructure across the city. One of the important things with our road repairs is I also think it's really important that we're considering the sidewalks and other walkways on the roads as well. Duluth, I believe, is ranked pretty poorly in terms of accessibility for those that use our sidewalks, our bike lanes, and our other alternative modes of transportation in the city. So it's really hard for everyone to get around. So in addition to your car, just think how hard it would be to ride a bike through that pothole. It's really hard. So I also think that with the repairs being allocated equally across the city, that's an issue I'd really like to address and see kind of where we are repairing roads. I know that they really do prioritize the highest traffic roads first, and then move from there and kind of see which neighborhoods are in need of them repairs the most. But really, we do need to look across the city. I think sometimes the East End can get prioritized before other areas of the city. And I think it would be good that we're really equally allocating our city staff and our city crews to repair roads so that everyone can have access to safe roads to use.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Next, we have Mr. Hobbs.
Yeah, I think that we've done, so since I joined council, we've allocated additional $1 million to street repair, and that'll be in addition to the extra $7 million that we assume conservatively from the sales tax. And I think that's a very good start. That's more than prior when we had the agreement with the casino. That was $6 million a year. So we're actually on track to have more of our roads resurfaced and repaired faster rate than in at least recent history in the city of Duluth. It's always something that we have to look at, and how do we pair that when we have our water main breaks or water main repairs so that we're able to do that in an efficient manner with both tax dollars. And I think that that's something that works. Do I think that it's happening evenly across the city? The easy answer would be say no, but that would actually be inaccurate. They are, city staff goes around across the entire city. There's a complaint online, a form that you can fill out. So you'll come out and fill out potholes, and that has been, I can tell you unanimously across the city, people are complaining about potholes, and they are getting filled when those requests come in. So it's not a location and geography saying that these, this neighborhood's getting priority over the others. So we've done a good job. And I think as an elected official, it's important to kind of combat that narrative that there's not this huge divide on what part of the city's receiving services at a higher rate. And so we are having that in a more equitable way all across the city.
Sir, and Mr. Forsman.
Will the roads be fixed before winter? No. Maybe if we had had the sales tax approved last year, we would be on our way. But obviously, the state legislature didn't see fit to see that through. Luckily, this year, that was not the case. So as a community leader, before I was on the council, I was down at the Capitol last year advocating for legislative action on our sales tax. And now, as an elected official, this time around, I was back there saying the same thing, please let us fix our own streets. We will hopefully start to get caught up. $10 million a year is significant. It's up from $3 million, which is some of the stats that Counselor Hobbs gave. One of the things that's important to me, and I think, you know, most of you have probably read the articles about the medical district and what that bill did and what it didn't do. There's some misperceptions up there. Maybe we'll even get into a question tonight. But I think it's really important that we are as transparent as possible with how we are fixing our roads. I would agree with Counselor Hobbs. We are doing it across the city, and I can tell you that roads are bad across the city from being outdoor knocking. I will say that I had a $1,500 pothole on my own street, though, so I would advocate that maybe my street isn't there for one of the worst ones. But my idea is pretty simple. It's a map on a city website that lists all of our roads with an estimated timeframe on when we're going to fix it. And it might be wrong, and it might need to change, but as transparent as possible for people to pull up your street and say, this is when I might expect some action, and this is how much it might cost me. It's something that I think we can at least start going toward. We did have the online forum, which is making it easier for people to report issues. But those sorts of things are easy for us to do, and they might take some resources in technology, but I think they're important.
Okay. We are moving on to question number four, and we are starting with Mr. Forsman, so I'll try to speak loudly. What do you believe that you can do as a candidate at large for the city to increase the availability of affordable childcare for both working and low-income families?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. The question's about increasing access to childcare. I would say that this has been sort of my signature issue from my time on the city council. It's an issue I've dealt with personally. I have a four-year-old and a one-year-old. And when we had our kids going to a home daycare, it was twice as expensive as our mortgage. So it is an issue that families are facing, and I call it an economic barrier, where even if you make a solid living wage, if you don't have affordable housing or affordable childcare or access to it, it's a huge issue. So the first thing I did is I focused on retention of our home daycares, and I wrote a letter to every single home daycare provider in the city of Duluth and sent it to them to say thank you for the work you do. They have a tough job. They don't make any money, and it's a financial system that is broken at a state, national level that we are trying to fix at a local level. And so, does that sound hopeless? A little bit. But are there things we can do? You bet. And a couple of things that I've worked on include using the economic development playbook to go out and recruit different chains that have facilities in multiple cities in the state of Minnesota but don't have a facility in Duluth. And we are actively doing that work right now with a couple of different prospects. We're looking at doing microloans, and they would either be through the city or in partnership with other entities to help the home daycares do things like repair fences and address issues with buying toys, which is a big startup issue for them for cash flowing. And then there's a number of big things that I would love to talk with our school district about that pertains to increasing the amount of infant care, because the infant care is really the issue that breaks the economics. And I am working every single day on this issue because there are 1,100 kids in Duluth who don't have a childcare spot.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Mayhew.
So I would just like to say, piggybacking off of what Counselor Forsman was saying, that really attracting and retaining our current providers is really important. This really does tie in also with affordable housing and how we can make our city council and our city more accessible to everyone, and that includes childcare. It's really hard to find childcare for many people in our town. And I've heard that on the doors, that people really need that to be able to make it to meetings, to make it to whatever it is their job, day in and day out. It's really important. I also think it's really important that we partner with our school districts, our school district locally. Having really strong public schools makes our city really strong and helps attract people to come and live here. And if we have opportunities for after-school, I know there are a lot of great programs like Key Zone and others that help take care of kids and provide activities for students after school. That's really important to me as well. So what can we do to work with our school district, to work with our other partners right now to really help build and continue to grow those programs so that everyone can afford to live in Duluth and everyone has the ability to live in Duluth?
Okay. After Mr. Mayhew, Mr. Hobbs, please.
Yeah, I think if everyone in this room thinks that all counselors are experts in everything, I'm just going to dismiss that notion right now. Counselor Forsman's put in a lot of work on this in this year on the council. We just did a zoning change to allow childcare facilities in zones that we haven't in the past. And that's important, I think. How do you look at with the Ascension St. Luke's, how you also have around-the-clock childcare? Because we have a lot of shift work in the city, and it's easy to say everyone's nine to five, but that's not the fact. We've got a lot of nurses and a lot of folks, janitors, that work at Ascension St. Luke's. And so how do we correct, you know, that? And I think looking at that partnership, UMD, where they have education majors for teachers, there could be a partnership with that. So I've had several conversations around how do we address that, but often tend to defer to Counselor Forsman on his expertise, as he has really dug in on this issue and has already taken tangible action. And it can't come fast enough. I certainly understand that, but we are moving in the right direction.
Sir, next is Mr. Medved.
So yeah, I definitely respect, you know, what Eric Forsman has done, you know, for childcare within the city. You know, one thing that I was a part of was youth centers, you know, for our community. I think we all remember a time when each community and each neighborhood had its own community center, you know, for the youth to go during the summertime, spend time there. And I think that's a very important, vital part of our neighborhoods, is, you know, bringing families together in the community, giving kids something to do to keep busy in the summertime, but also to create programming, you know, for our youth and, you know, have a place for them to go. You know, can we piggyback off of, you know, St. Louis County and the school district and find cool solutions in each individual neighborhood and community to provide childcare? I think so. I think we can do a lot of cool things, be creative, work with the Y, being part of an amazing project out west. I don't know if you have heard of, you know, it used to be called the Shack, but now it's the GND Rec Alliance. You know, I was proud to serve on the board with Mark Bobin, Franny Morris. I worked with a lot of great community leaders to bring together a community center that worked for everybody. It took a lot of working together, bringing programming in, working with the Y and giving kids a great, stable place, and, you know, learning a lot of great programming in that center. So I think stuff like that is very possible, but it's going to take working together and also addressing, you know, issues that current providers have and finding solutions for them, and also each neighborhood individually. So that's my solution.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, we have Mr. Stewart.
Well, having two kids in the Duluth area, I actually had to go through the struggles that goes with childcare. And I've actually come up with a few plans for this. It's going to take us as a community. We have a really big abundance of college students, and we have a very big abundance of retired people in our community. As I've said before in the last forums that we had, that I met an 87-year-old man, and he said, you know, I'd rather die standing up than sitting in a chair. And this means to me is that we have a lot of retired people that really want to go to work and help out the community, and they actually have the opportunity to. My mom being retired as well, she's actually volunteers, but she would actually like to get paid a little bit to help with her social security. There's also another plan that I had that our college students could actually help out in this situation with taking kids overnight for mothers that end up working overnight shifts, or mothers that end up working during the day. And I feel if we tie that in and help as a community and tie that in all together, we'd actually be a better place. Thanks.
Sir, you will go next, Mr. Stewart. I guess I'll borrow the microphone if I could. The BAG at Duluth campaign is a grassroots environmental campaign working to promote the reuse through a fee on the single paper and plastic, phase-out styrofoam, to-go containers, and to make straws available by default. This organization currently has the support of 120 businesses and organizations and 1,800 citizens. What do you see as your role as a city counselor related to grassroots efforts such as this one? Sorry. What do you see as your role as a city counselor in either supporting or addressing or whatever grassroots organization or grassroots efforts such as the BAG at Campaign? The BAG at Campaign is an environmental campaign that's currently supported by 120 businesses and 180 citizens, or 1,800 citizens. And they're working to reduce through a fee on single-use paper and plastics, phase-out styrofoam, and to-go containers and make straws available by default. They're just an example of a grassroots organization that is, that has some local support. Here's what you feel your role is related to grassroots organizations such as this one.
Grassroots organizations have always been a great start to anything. This organization actually charging a fee to get rid of papers and plastics would be nice. It's actually happened in Oregon right now. They actually got rid of all the plastics, straws. We're not allowed to have plastic straws anymore. They actually took them out of my glass when I first got here from me, which is great. I totally believe that we should get rid of plastics. What we need to put into place, though, is a lot of recycling, and that takes the community to do that. As many of you may know, garbage is going to be a really big issue coming up forward, not just here in Minnesota, but all over our country. So anything doing grassroots startups, depending on the startup, depending what they're actually going for, I really get behind whatever they're talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next in line is Mr. Hobbs.
Yeah, in relation to what's the council's role to grassroots groups, I think is to have honest conversations and be transparent on where you're at, the role of council, what you can do, what you can't do, and not promise the world and not deliver on this. So when it comes to this, I think that everyone agrees that we need to decrease our consumption of just waste in general is a smart avenue today. Holiday Inn just announced that they're going to go away with their shampoo and conditioner bottles and do bulk purchasing to eliminate and reduce some of their plastic consumption. In the state of Minnesota, we can't ban plastic bags. The legislature said that we can't do that. And so with, you know, BAG at's specific proposal, I certainly am supportive of the, you know, the outcome and goal of reducing single use. But with the fee on how it's administered, I would have some difficulty with that, given that other municipalities have either have an economy of scale in which they've invested that, like DC and the river cleanup. We don't have that size of an economy, but how do we work to figure that out and not put the ownership on the consumer and more on the business and not just write that off? Right now, the proposal is X amount of cents per bag. And what's going to happen is there's no incentive for a business to change their policy, and they'll just write that off as a cost of business. And I don't know if that's necessarily the role for us, but getting to that end goal in the next couple of weeks, I think you'll see me as a counselor using my ability to convene folks to address this.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mr. Mayhew.
So I just want to start off by saying I am in support of the BAG at Duluth campaign. And as someone who is really concerned about, obviously, where we're at right now and the impact on future generations of our consumption and our usage of plastics and other non-renewables, this is really important. And I think that passing a nominal fee on a city level as an ordinance would be something that's very doable. And then in addition, working on having plastic straws available upon request and styrofoam, getting rid of that as well for takeout boxes, because that stays in our environment forever. And we really don't want that getting into our lake, into our natural ecosystem that surrounds us here. And it's so great that we have such a wonderful environment that we live in, and we need to continue protecting that for years to come. So going into a little bit more about, like, where we're thinking about recycling right now, too, is that we need to expand what we're thinking about and actually start thinking about composting as well. What can we do as a city to start composting across the entire city, working with our waste providers, waste management, Hartels, and really seeing what we can do to provide municipal composting options for people so that everyone has access to it? We do have facilities across the city, but that would be a great thing to start on. And finally, I just want to say in response to supporting or addressing grassroots efforts, I've been an organizer with many grassroots effort campaigns, and I really appreciate the great work and bringing issues forward. And I'm really excited to continue working with those organizations and organizing with them in the future.
Okay. Next on the list is Mr. Medved.
Well, definitely, I think that grassroots organizations are important. You know, they bring a lot of great ideas forward. You know, they're very passionate about them. They, you know, get the message across. So I think that, you know, working with them, you know, is important. I see the need, the vision that they have, but I think it's going to take time. As I always say, good things take time. And both parties need to understand, you know, that there is pros and cons to each individual effort. So I think that working with, you know, current business in the community is important, you know, finding solutions for them that we're not going to leave them high and dry, but also, you know, seeing the future and what our goal is here. But I think moving forward together as a team and understanding, you know, the pros and cons, like I said. So working as a group is important and moving forward, so.
Okay. And lastly, Mr. Forsman.
Well, I see Counselor Filippovich and Vanette here as well. And I will say, anybody who's ever had a city email inbox knows that there is no shortage of passion from Duluthians for all sorts of different grassroots issues. And so it's one of the things that makes it fun to it fun to serve in elected office in this city is that there are so many people who care deeply about many different issues. And I know the Bega Duluth one is one of them as well. So, my approach to grassroots efforts like Bega is first and foremost to get educated and also to take opportunities to take opportunities to reach out and take meetings from folks like Jamie Harvey, who I see in the audience, who's been pushing a lot of this effort. I then went and sat down with WLSST, who is the expert in this field for our wastewater in our community and wanted to learn from their perspective, what is the issue? Because I think when we find some common ground around goals, like we definitely want to see the reduction of single plastic or single-use plastics in our community. I wanted to learn from their perspective, what is the biggest bank for our block? One of the interesting things that I learned, that I don't hear being talked about, and this doesn't mean it's mutually exclusive, is that a lot of the plastic that enters the Great Lakes is thought to have come from our clothes. With artificial clothing like fleece, we can shed our fibers when we do our laundry and it goes into our lakes because the wastewater treatment systems are not set up for that. And so how do we attract more investment in research into addressing issues like that, that is probably more a primary source of plastic pollution in the Great Lakes? And then how do we get results as a community in order to address whatever those goals are? And I think reducing single-use plastics is a goal that I share.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now we will start again with Mr. Forsman. I'll take the short question. It's going to be louder. Please tell us your strategy to authentically advocate for residents from backgrounds and cultures unlike yourself. And these are now questions that have been submitted either on our website or by the community in this room. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great question. You know, when I was appointed to the council, I was pretty upfront that I'm a white male that's young, who's probably had every advantage and privilege that most people in my life circumstance would have. And so it's not something that I claimed at that time or at this time to have direct experience with some of the struggles that I know those in our community have faced. But what I do is I try to meet people where they're at in their own neighborhood and listen to them on what their challenges are. And so I know that we have health disparities, we have income disparities, we have access to all of the things we've talked about tonight with affordable housing and good-paying jobs that depend on things like your race. And what I do is I try to learn from people's experience, hear their ideas in their own neighborhoods, and work with folks who are experts in those fields to try to come up with policy solutions that will help make life better for all Duluthians in the city of Duluth.
Mr. Medved?
Well, this whole entire campaign, I've talked about, you know, together. You know, it's not about one, you know, group. It's about working together for everybody, you know, every voice in the city, every individual and hearing, you know, their concerns. And so I think every individual neighborhood, every, you know, individual block has their own concerns. And I think, you know, meeting those individuals, learning what their concerns are and working with them individually, one-on-one is important. So, going back to the, you know, the homeless topic is, it's the people, the person, the individual. So hearing what their struggles are and their concerns is important. So meeting, you know, if I got to meet and shake everybody's hand in the entire city, you know, I'm going to. So that's what it's going to take, is working together with each individual person, neighborhood, and city block. So, you know, that's what I'm here for, is working together.
Mr. Stewart. Yes, sir. The question is, from our audience, please tell your strategy to authentically advocate for residents from backgrounds and cultures unlike yourself.
The community, I guess, is what we're going for right there. Getting together as a community, but there's a lot of stigma, not just here in Duluth, but all over the place. And America needs to come first. And for America to come first, our communities needs to stick together. We need to actually look at each other and talk and actually bring each other in and say, hey, I know up the North Shore, they had last year's SEDFA festival, something I've never been to in my life. It was great. And then there's not that many things. There's powwows up at Mishkauzin and a lot of things going on in communities. And not a lot of people are showing up to these things and we actually need to, because this actually brings us in to their situations. And talking about these situations actually helps us grow as a community and it breaks the stigma down. I know there's people around my community right now that are actually scared to go outside because of different things. And I look at them like it's a beautiful place, it's beautiful people. And if you go out there and just talk to them, you don't need to be, have any fear or any situation of that. You actually need to bring them in. Amazing food. Food should be the first. We should have big festivals around food from all over this country. We have Native Americans, we have Indian, Indian Indians, we have people from Europe. And we don't share these experiences. We basically take our restaurants and say, hey, this is what they eat there. And that's not actually the truth. Food is life. And I think actually if we bring that together, we can actually bring our community together.
Next is Mr. Mayhew.
So, I just wanted to start off and say, once again, we all need to acknowledge our privileges. And as a straight white male, I do acknowledge that I am very privileged in the society that we live in today. And I'm really excited to learn and listen from everyone in our city, to hear different perspectives on issues and to grow and expand who I am as a person and really bring that forward to the city council. So part of that is through the campaign, we've really focused on empowerment and listening to voters and hearing what they have to say and bringing that forward. I've heard a lot of great issues on the doors and I've taken a lot of those to heart and talked to a lot of great people. So, part of that is knocking on in communities that have had really low voter turnout in the past. That's one of the big areas that we need to focus on is really engaging communities that have not been engaged before. In addition, on council, I think it's also important that we expand our city hall and the city initiative that the mayor has done a great job of working on and continue to work to bring city hall into communities and actually knock on doors and have conversations with people, bringing that table to them rather than them having to come to city hall at 7:00 PM on a Tuesday night, which is unattainable for some people that either have to deal with childcare or whatever it be. There are a lot of barriers to making it to those city hall meetings. So really, meeting people where they're at, having those conversations, learning and listening, and growing as a person is what I'm really excited to do.
Thank you, sir. And next, Mr. Hobbs.
Yeah, I think first acknowledging that my perception is my reality, your perception is your reality. And they can be very different life experiences and all of that. And so believing somebody where they're at in life and their experiences and not discounting it because it doesn't match up with yours or mine, I think is the first step to having that authentic conversation. I think we look at, I've been a very open and transparent and accessible councillor. I've done this Hundred Cups of Coffee. I'll have ninety at the end of this week where I have coffee with any constituent that wants to have a conversation. And then we also look back to the Emergency Warming Center through CHUM. We have folks that are experiencing homelessness that aren't coming into shelters would come into the way, come into the emergency shelter because of the way that structure is. And so we took that reality that those folks don't feel comfortable in a very rigorous system that CHUM has set up and we've changed that. We believe them, we change it. It's worked more. More people are in our emergency shelters at night now with that CHUM, just from listening to that. And so I think that I do a good job on that. I reach out as much as I can and always have an open door policy. I think that's something that as an elected official, you can always reach out more and have more conversations. And that's really key to having that authentic dialogue with folks.
Thank you, sir. We're just trying to make sure that we accommodate time here, but I have one short question. There were some very good questions that were submitted that we wanted to ask, but I have one short question that if each of you were willing to just give one minute to, we could ask this question and then move on to the closing statements. So, the last question is, would you give us, please give us an issue that you would be like to know, like to be known as the champion for?
I think for me, the easy one's housing. I've chosen to work in housing during my day job and advocate for that on the council. And I'm highly involved in the League of Minnesota Cities. And one of the things on how do we fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which everyone's going to talk about, is looking at our vacation loan units and how do you attach a fee while that unit is taken out of the private market into the, out of the private homeownership and into a private market where it's now a commercial unit and having that value recaptured for folks to put into a trust fund would be a dedicated stream. So housing would be, I think, the one issue that I want folks to remember me from.
Thank you, sir. Okay. And now we will move to Mr. Medved. Just one minute, please, sir.
Well, I think that working hard is, you know, where I come from and my background, you know, I think no matter what obstacle I face in life and no matter what challenge I've, you know, come up upon, that working hard is what it takes and teamwork. And so I would love to bring that to council and make things, you know, happen and improve a track record. Like I said, you know, from one-four stores, you know, three to forty employees, I think we can make it happen. So, working together with everybody involved and every individual is what counts and hearing every voice. So, and finding a solution that works for everybody involved. So, making it happen and working together.
Okay. Mr. Forsman?
The easy answer would be childcare and leave it at that. But I am also in economic development for a living, so I couldn't miss an opportunity to talk about that as well. We have a tremendous opportunity in our city to be known as a city where you want to live first and work second, and we can build an economy around that. And so, Councilor Hobbs and I passed a resolution with full and the support from the council recently where we're looking at how do you make it more effective to streamline requirements around permitting and inspections and try to incentivize development of what we call core investment areas, which are spread throughout the city of Duluth so that you can live in any neighborhood and have a job and be able to have access to those things like housing and childcare. As well as that, we have issues with our workforce not being aligned with training as far as the jobs that are available. And so continuing efforts around workforce training to make sure that folks are going into jobs that are paying a living wage. And also, we need to start more businesses in the city of Duluth. And UMD could do a great job and other research-based universities have done a terrific job in places like Flint, Michigan with accelerating startups. And I think that we can have an Office of Technology and Commercialization here in Duluth.
Thank you, sir. And next is Mr. Forsman. Oh, if that was Mr. Forsman, we will move on to Mr. Stewart.
I'd like to be the champion of the community coming together and forming Central Park. Central Park is actually in New York, but we have the Central High School that is, was torn down about ten years now. And it's been sitting up there vacant. It's actually costs seven point eight million dollars is the price tag right now. I'd like our community to come together and actually buy it and name it Central Park of Duluth and have it for the whole community. It has the best view. I've actually been all over the country. I've been to Africa for eight years. I've been to India, I've been to Saudi Arabia. I've been all over. And it is one of the best views standing over. If you're looking at STC and you're looking over the lake, you can see Superior, you can see the Great Lake. It is just amazing. So if you ever have the chance, they actually let you up there and actually look, please go up there and check it, check it out. That's what I'd like to be known for.
Okay. And then Mr. Mayhew.
So the one issue that I would like to be known for is really working on accessibility in our city. And that's also expanding accessibility beyond the traditional definition where we all think about how are our roads and our sidewalks and everything and our facilities and buildings, how are they all accessible to people of all abilities? But it's also the creation of affordable, safe housing for everyone and really doubling down and committing to that as a city. The mayor's done a great job at starting a new task force and hiring a director for that force as well. And then also, really, the creation of living wage jobs is super important to me. And I think we can work with our partners in the city and working on initiatives that will help pay people the wages that they need to live here in our city is super important. So really focusing on accessibility now and in the future so that everyone can afford to live in Duluth, whether you live here right now or you're looking at living in Duluth in the future.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayhew, we will start with our closing remarks at this point and we will ask you to go first. This, again, is a two-minute time period. So, please go ahead and begin.
All right. So I'll kind of continue what I was saying there. Really, I'm excited that there are so many people here today to participate in local democracy. Local democracy actually has such a huge impact on our day-to-day lives. And I know a lot of us in this room understand that, but not everyone does. Everyone thinks the presidential election is the biggest one. We have to focus on that, organize for that. And that is important, but locally is where things start. So thank you all for being here. I am really excited to be running for Duluth City Council to create a forward-looking and a community-focused city council. I'm here to learn, here to listen, and also to bring forward some ideas within accessibility, sustainability, and empowerment in our city. And really, if we work together, we can continue to move Duluth forward. So I'm really excited that you are all here today. And thank you once again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum.
Sir, okay. Next is Mr. Forsman.
Yeah, thanks to the League again for hosting this. This is terrific. And what Councilor Hobbs said earlier about us on the council not being experts in every topic is completely true. There's nothing more humbling than serving in office in the city or even the city superior, I see we have some officials from there, and learning something new every single day and being expected to tell the answers to all of the questions that come in. And I can say it takes an incredible amount of work to try to stay on top of either just an email inbox. You are all super passionate and I appreciate that. And it's part of what makes it such an enjoyable learning experience for all of us. The question around why me, why I should earn your support is always a pretty tough one to answer. But a couple of things that I'll touch on, first of all, my accessibility as a councillor over the past year. You see me helping the community in every neighborhood and every festival that we have. I do things like attend our community club meetings to try to learn about what's going on from Park Point to Morgan Park to Lester River. And then I also do things that I think go a little bit above and beyond, like on Friday night when I spent eight hours after I worked a full day and rode along with our police department. And what that experience gave me was something I've never seen before. I saw a man come back from the dead because he had overdosed on heroin in our fire department and police department, which I don't think are two words that have been mentioned yet tonight. Did amazing work to bring that guy back. And it is amazing the things that look like numbers on a page that when you see them with your own eyes, change your perspective on what's happening in our community. And so I am somebody who shows up, who does my homework, who tries to keep an open mind. And through the listening that I've done and the relationships I've built, I hope that I will have the opportunity to continue serving through the primary and through the general election. And I just, again, want to thank all of you for taking the time to be out here tonight, learning about which candidates have the experience and the passion and the energy to best represent you.
Sir, Mr. Hobbs is next.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. And I think all elected officials in Duluth and just boosters in general always say that it's a perfect Duluth day. I think today was. It was a perfect temperature for me. And thank you for coming out and being indoors for that. And again, why do I feel under your support? I think I've done a really good job in the past three and a half years. I've worked very hard on the issues that matter. I've worked in partnership with all of my colleagues on the council. I've with Mayor Larson on forming the Affordable Housing Task Force that was just mentioned, getting that up and off the ground. I think I've been highly effective in that. And then also building bridges across the community among various partners, neighborhoods, and then also across the state. I think my involvement in the League of Minnesota Cities has been very helpful in advocating for Duluth. We had a great year during the state session. I think that highlighted accessibility and how to make sure that government is accessible to folks. We have now recorded our agenda sessions and put those online. That's something that I advocated for and that's up. So we keep those up for six months. How do we also take all the deposits that we have? People want to invest in Duluth. We have over a billion dollars in private investment that is historic for the city. And how do we not come back as just the success, but how do we build upon that and have that go further into another economic development, whether it's biotech or whatever we see in Rochester Mayor or Boston, right now, just partnered in their Medical One District with the University of Minnesota to have more facilitation of ideas from very smart medical engineers and finance. That's something that we can do here. It doesn't have to happen in St. Paul and Rochester alone. It can happen here in Duluth. So how do we take all of this positive momentum that we have and everybody wanting to live, work, and play here and build that for a lot of folks and not leave neighborhoods behind and not leave demographics behind? And so I think I've done a good job in advocating for everyone and we do another, would like to do another four years in that.
Mr. Medved?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the League for, you know, the invite tonight. I just want to thank everybody for showing up, you know, and hearing, you know, what we have to say and also for us to hear your concerns. You know, it's going to take a team and it's going to keep us moving forward together as a group. You know, and just one thing, you know, about me is, you know, I want to be a fresh voice for council. I want to go back to the basics and make sure we're focusing on the things that, you know, make a city a whole, things that are going to keep the city growing for years and years to come and, you know, for our younger generations. But, you know, I want to be that guy, you know, with a proven track record of making things happen, of working hard. And let's move the city in the right direction together. That's what it's going to take, team effort together. So that's one thing I love to, you know, work towards and would love to bring to council. So, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Okay. And Mr. Stewart?
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to come up here and speak with you. Yeah, we talked about a lot of things today. We talked about homelessness, childcare, we talked about the streets. I have a big feel, a Dreams fan. People that they will come, like I said, I want to be remembered for trying to bring Central Park, Duluth to the thing, to an aspect that could actually be part of Duluth. I think that if we focus on building, bringing smaller jobs, I know a lot of people want to bring these big jobs and get rich quick type things. But I think if we get back to our values of mom-and-pop stores and supporting them into our infrastructure, taking our money and supporting their credit unions, that money can actually be put back into our communities, put it into our houses, putting back into a lot of new investments into our community. And our community will actually grow a lot more with community backing. And our community will actually grow a lot more with community backing it up than it will be at looking for these grants or these funds from outside, because when we stick together, we can do anything. Thank you.
All right. Well, this concludes tonight. Actually, I just want to use that. Thank you, everyone. This concludes tonight's pre-primary forum for candidates for a city councilor at large for the city of Duluth. So our purpose in sponsoring the forums like this is to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss their issues and what's important to you face-to-face. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues and there's a limited time setting such as this one. And there were some good questions that were submitted. So if your questions were not addressed, you should feel free to contact any of these candidates directly. And information can be found on the Secretary of State website. And so, sir, thank you to the candidates and all of you in the community here for attending. And please do not forget to vote in the pre-primary on August 13th. Thank you very much.